Okay.
Wow.
Yeah, I imagine they blocked that.
Yep, they do.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council regular meeting of November fourteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
Awesome. All right, now pledge of allegiance. Could we have Shadow Gentry, Mr. Hyvee, again, lead us in the pledge? I appreciate it, Shadow.
My pledge is... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, presentations. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm smiling because it's my pleasure to...
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna say introduce, but as a person, really doesn't need much introduction. Bob Riddell has been appointed as the new director of the Crime Free Bureau, which the council created here in the last month. Bob is no stranger to the council and to many of the people in the audience, and Bob is seated in the audience. And he is a person who's been a... An exceptional police officer for over twenty-eight years in our community. Bob started in nineteen ninety-four. He progressively went through the ranks of sergeant, lieutenant, and commander. He's currently the commander of investigations. Bob is also acting chief for the year leading up to Chief Byrd's appointment, and so we've been fortunate to have some very good leaders in our department all along. And... But that's not why I'm talking about him tonight. You laid out some guidelines on what you expected. We expected somebody who would be thorough and fair, someone who would be very dedicated to the task, and I think Bob hits all those notes at a very high level. Bob has shown, particularly when he was acting chief, in a very kind of tumultuous time in our community, and showed that he was a good listener. He's a believer in collaboration and cooperation to get things done. He will be working primarily with a lot of landlords in our community, and some are in the audience tonight. He knows many of them. He'll get to know all of them, and he'll get to know all the properties that he may not have seen because we have some good... We have a lot of good landlords in our community, and there hasn't been any reason for him, in his current capacity, to be there. But nevertheless, he intends to be well-informed. And so it's my pleasure to introduce him today. He will start on November twenty-seventh. That'll be his first day. He's moving in next to my office in City Hall, and he will be a direct report to me. I'm really looking forward to working with him closely on this. So thank you for your initiative and your support, and let me introduce Bob to stand up and take a bow.
Hey, Bob.
Bob is not a speechmaker, so... It's not necessary that he give a speech tonight, but it's nice to look forward to that new role for him.
Well, Bob, the sledgehammer from one particular landlord is in the office at City Hall in the conference room. If you ever want to borrow it, you just gotta holler at me, and I'd be happy to let you take that out for a spin. So all seriousness aside, I'm really excited to have Mr. Riddell in this position. As we know, we've been going through this a long time. We've got some problematic landlords in our community that we need to make sure have some oversight. And if they do not end up complying with what we believe is the standard to live in the city of DeKalb, which means a place of safety for your kids, yourself, a clean, well-kept environment, then this is not the place you should do business with, and it'd be time to sell your property and move on. Really excited, I think, Bob, knowing our community for as long as he has, knowing the landlords, as City Manager Nicholas has commented on, we'll be able to work with all the great landlords, which we have so many of those, including Bob Carlson, that's sitting right here in the audience as well, but work directly with them to help them however we can. But then again, the problematic landlords that have caused us so much of a headache in our community, really looking forward to dialing up our game when it comes to accountability in the city of DeKalb. So on behalf of council, Bob, definitely welcome and looking forward to working with you, sir. Any other comments or questions? All right. Moving on to agenda item E, public participation. I have Stephen Aiel?
Aielo.
Aielo.
Iielo.
Iielo. Yes, Iielo. Go ahead, come up to the mic there, and Stephen, you have three minutes. I'm required to keep everyone to that timeframe, so nothing personal, sir.
All right. It's on. All right. I'm here on behalf of friends, family, and my alderman, as encouragement to speak up about a neighbor I have. I'm... First of all, my name's Stephen Aielo, and I live off of Glidden and Taylor, and so I'm close by. And what I want to say about this is parking issues. The gentleman that I live next to has quite a few vehicles, at least five out in front. There's no parking on the other side of the street. There's been a lot of words of... The gentleman is just not courteous at all to anybody that I can tell. That's one agenda, and another one is that he cuts through my yard if he can, and he also has one of his fences falling, so I got it propped up with a two-by-four. His yard's a mess, so I'd rather not see it. But anyway, his vehicles have been a problem. Yes, I have a garage, but I'd like to park in front of my house. He recently told me I'm not allowed to park there anymore. He's like taking it away from me. And I'm trying to remain tactful and good. I don't want to use any violence or anything. All he knows how to do is use very erotic ways of telling me off, and so I'm kind of feeling like a lot of other neighbors there that I've spoken to, so I know I have something to gripe about. I wasn't gonna say anything to anyone, but people have encouraged me to, so I don't build up too much resentment. And that's why I'm here tonight, and I'm glad that you guys have this kind of a meeting so people can speak up about these issues. I've made a police report when I first moved there about his parking. They said that he's got the whole street if he wants. I don't know if that's right, because a lot of people need those spots. And yes, there's spots open to me, but I don't want to take my neighbor's spot either all the time. So that's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Stephen, and we'll definitely pursue this further. Yes, City manager.
I was just gonna say, maybe you and Chief Byrd could step out for a minute and compare notes a little bit, and then if there's some other things such as a fence and yard issues, yard nuisances, that type of thing, we can share. There's another department deals with that, but on-street parking is something the police do with. He can tell you what the rules are. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic.
Does he own the camper across Taylor as well?
Yes.
Yes, so this has been ongoing for many, many years. Yes.
Well, I just want to say, we've talked in this room a lot, and I'm just gonna say it tonight for your benefit, Steve, we're not gonna tolerate bullying in this town.
Yeah, at all.
That's a big circle with the X over, okay? So young, old, middle-aged, doesn't matter. People preying on the goodwill of others. It's not gonna happen, so we'll help you.
Yeah, Chief, and Steve, you don't need to say. You came, you can leave. There's no offense. I don't even say, but that's my car, so I probably need to follow up with me just to make sure that things are good, okay? Chief, would you mind having a conversation with them? Yeah, and agree, City manager. There's no tolerance for bullying in any way, shape, or form. Any other comments or questions, council, on that? All right. Moving on to appointments, agenda item F, we have none. Then moving on to agenda item G, approval of the minutes. We'll just move to number two, minutes submitted by the recording secretary. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the recording secretary?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
The minutes have been approved. Moving on to agenda item H, consent agenda. Number one, accounts payable and payroll through November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two in the amount of four million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cents. Number two, investment and bank balance summary through September twenty-twenty-two. Number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through September twenty-twenty-two. And number four, minutes of the joint review board meeting of July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins. I'll just do seconded by Alderman Larson. Moving on to agenda item... Oh, roll call, please, sorry.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Consent agenda has been approved. Thanks for doing that, Chief. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item I, public hearings. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for truth and taxation hearing, FY twenty-twenty-two annual property tax levy, and I'll open it at six twelve PM. So first, is there anyone in attendance that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, hearing none. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The truth and taxation notice goes out usually if the taxing bodies looking at increasing its levy. We're not gonna get into a levy definition here tonight, but I'm happy if the council wants me to, to go further on this. But if we're going to increase it by more than, at five percent or more, and in our case, we publish three different levies. One is the cities, one is the libraries, and one is the aggregate or the combination of the two. So let me just walk you through the factoids relating to them, and then I'll stop, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, because the numbers that are before you tonight will also be incorporated into two ordinances that are also on tonight's agenda, the levy ordinance, which is on first reading only, and the abatement ordinance, which is related to that on first reading only. So the proposed city corporate levy is explained in your background and also in the truth and taxation notice. It's seven million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. That's an increase of four percent, about two hundred and seventy-three, almost two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That's for the city, for the library. The levy is two million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, which is an increase of three hundred thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And then the combined is ten million, ninety-five thousand, thirty-five dollars. That is an increase of six percent over the twenty-one combined levies. A couple of other things that are important ingredients is homeowners are going to go to their mailboxes in April to see what their taxes are and what the rate is. There is a equalized assessed valuation for the whole community, which we're pegging at seven hundred and eighty million from about six hundred and ninety-four million plus in two thousand and twenty-one. We think it may be higher, and in fact, the truth and taxation notice was at seven hundred and sixty-eight million, five hundred thousand. So it's a higher estimate now than it was a couple of weeks ago when that notice went out, and it could be by the end of the year it's even higher. So why is that? Why don't we know? It's because it's a moving target at this time of the year. Communities are not submitting their levies until the end of this, toward the end of December. The individual tax assessors from the townships didn't have to get their numbers in until November first, and so the county's doing its very best to pull together the numbers, assess the fairness in terms of the level, and also reviewing one more time the multiplier that the townships lose, and now we're getting into the weeds. But the point is that our community EAV is rising. That's the denominator in the grand calculation. The numerator is going to be our levy, which, as I mentioned, was seven million, one hundred and nineteen thousand and change, and it comes to a rate. So what are the rates that are going to be on the tax bills that people are gonna see in the spring? So for the city, we project that the rate is going to be point nine-one-two-seven-one, which is seven point four-four percent lower than our rate last year. For the library, the rate is estimated to be point three-eight-one-five-three, which is one point oh-two percent lower than last year. I will say that since two thousand and eighteen, the city rate has decreased by twenty-three percent. Bravo. Finally, what will that likely impact be? We don't know for sure, but just guessing with the best knowledge available to us. As you look on top of page four in your background, you can see a couple of takeoffs that we do every year that show what that proverbial average homeowner is. This is not average, and this is probably the median household, but we started three or four years ago with a house that had a value of like a four-bedroom house of three hundred thousand dollars, or a three-bedroom house, three hundred thousand dollars, and EAV of that was a hundred thousand. Now, there's been a multiplier, there's been increases since then. And so where we are now is that we would see with approval later on in the... Well, it would be in December of the city's... Well, it would be the end of November, the end of the city's proposed levy, we would see savings, actual out-of-pocket savings for the individual property owner of about ten bucks. Could be a lot more than that, could be a little less than that, but there should be some savings in any case for... That's for the city portion, for the library portion, at the same rate, assuming the EAV comes in about where we think it's going to, a slight increase of about twenty dollars out-of-pocket. So for twenty-two, the final analysis on the basis of what we know so far is that we'll have a combined city and library rate of one point two-nine-four-two-four. That's a reduction in the overall rate of five point six-four percent from last year's rate.
Council, so this is the best time to have this whole conversation?
Uh, we could wait. The advantage now is you have all these numbers in front of you.
Right.
When we get to the levy ordinance, it's a little more condensed and compressed.
Well, I'll kick it off with the first question. So you mentioned the EAV went up, and I don't expect you to remember these numbers, but give me a ballpark. If that wouldn't have happened, where would the city's rate have been, and where would the library's rate have been? And I'm mostly concerned with, would it both have been lower, flat, or higher?
Yeah, so with what we started with a couple of weeks ago, the city's rate would have been lower by about six percent. Library's rate would have been up about a point, about a half a percent. That was at the seven hundred and sixty-eight million, five hundred thousand estimate of EAV, and now we've gone up to seven hundred and eighty million based on some information we have from development on the south side of town and some late assessments that were suggested by that township assessor. And so we see all rates going down, both of the library and the city, by a larger amount because the denominator is that much bigger.
Council? Alderman Favor.
Yeah, I want to thank you and the city staff for the work you're putting in. Obviously, the sharpening of pencils, you know, especially at budget time, and just being stewards of the community's funds. I... We're seeing, right, we're in the midst of inflationary times. Home prices in the last two years have gone up, which is impacting the EAV, and we're still able to continue to reduce the rate. So, you know, again, just kudos to the city staff and to yourself for, you know, leading the charge. I appreciate the hard work.
We... I should say, you charged me and our staff back in March when we did our financial plan update to try to work in the six months that would follow, and that's where we are now, with other taxing bodies, to talk about how we can collectively reduce the aggregate rate for all of the taxing bodies in the community, because we were at about a threshold of about twenty percent higher than our competitive cities in northern Illinois, and that affects how we... Whether we can attract business, or at least on the terms that we'd like, and affects the size of the abatements that we have to offer, property tax abatements to land, some larger investments. So we've been working on that. There's a lot more work to do, but you're showing... If you were to support this, you're showing some dramatic leadership because we could go for the goal, too. We could reach and grab and get... But we're the only general-purpose taxing body in the city. County is general purpose as well, but... So it falls to us to show that leadership, and you've always done that since I've been here.
So Bill and I met with the school district recently in order to have the conversation about driving our tax rate down to nine point five. Let's say that's a target, and Bill has generated multiple spreadsheets that each taxing body out there, what would it look like reducing their rate to a point where we can get to nine point five in the next two or three years?
We did three years. Yeah, that was aggressive.
Yeah, so next three years. And it is aggressive, but with the massive amounts of EAV that I'm gonna maybe exaggerate, but I don't think so, that are piling in and will really continue to pile in year over year. It should be really easy for... Really easy. I don't want to use that word, because I don't know the individual circumstances of all the taxing bodies, so that'd be incorrect to say that. There has never been a time, and Bill, you've been around the city of DeKalb for a long time, but I don't think there's ever been a point in time... I don't think there's ever been a point in time where the opportunity to really drive down the tax rate while having... While still having a positive impact on the levy of each taxing body out there, there's never been a moment like there is right now, where everyone can still grow their budgets, grow their levies, while also reducing the burden on individual taxpayers. And that's where I'm at. That's what... I know Bill would love to get there. We started meeting with the school district, like I said, because that's the largest taxing body out there, so of course, getting them on board is important in order to achieve this. Alderman Favor, you made a great comment. Bill and staff and our finance director, Dipman, have done an amazing job figuring this out. How are we gonna be able to accomplish this? Because to me, if all that money is coming in and you can still increase your levy, you can still increase your budget, and you can do more than you ever have been from previous years, that's just a... It's a wonderful situation to be in. My concern is, and the reason why I personally want to see all of us drive down to the nine point five, is to be competitive from a property tax perspective. All the surrounding communities are a lot less than us. So this is the time when all taxing bodies need to come together, and the leadership of those taxing bodies need to come together in order to figure out, how are we gonna reduce that particular tax rate? So all the residents of this wonderful city who have contributed so much for so long, finally, finally, have the ability to see a reasonable tax rate when it comes to property taxes, which we know is the number one complaint of any homeowner, any landlord, any commercial business, any industrial business in the state of Illinois. So I tee all that up, and this is where... I think Emily's here. Yeah, so executive director Faulkner of the library is here. I'm curious, Emily, last time when we went through this whole process, we talked about tax rate, and then my understanding is, if we wouldn't have had this increased EAV at the last minute, you guys still would have been flat or higher this year. So help me understand, and I apologize. I came to the meeting, your library board meeting, someone to find out more the other night, but I couldn't stay. I was there an hour, and I had to leave.
Yeah.
But I'd like an understanding of why, when we're all trying to get to this point.
Right, so I think what you missed at that meeting is that we actually had a discussion about the tax rate. Part of the issue for the library is that we do our figuring two months before the city does. So we had to give you a draft budget back in September, and Bill can attest that we had very little information about what the EAV was going to be then, because as he said, the taxing... The assessors don't do their job until November. So when I start calling them up in August and asking them what they think, it's a lot of like, ah, go for this, I think it'll be about that. So a lot of it's guesswork on our part. The meeting...
Same with us, yeah.
Right, but ours starts two months further. Again, so again, you're getting our guesses two months out from any information. The guesswork for the city doesn't really start happening until after ours has been completed. The meeting we had on Wednesday night was where we did our final budget, which is where we reviewed what the expectations at that point in time were. So we actually had looked at different ways of doing the tax rate. By that point, we had heard from Bill that the estimate was seven hundred and eighty million. So we had talked about whether or not we could cut even more corners and try to drive the tax rate down further. Our expectation has been to keep the tax rate flat or lower it. With the seven hundred and eighty million, you can see that we lowered it slightly. There's some discussion about what the appropriate level to lower it to is. I mean, part of the... Part of getting into the weeds on this is that nine point five that you talk about for the tax rate you're going for, the library's in the point-five part, we're point thirty-eight and some change in there. When I look at the other taxing bodies that you're comparing yourselves to, the library is about, oh my gosh, we're at thirty-eight cents. We should be at about thirty-seven cents and some change. So we're very close to what the average median level is for libraries like us in the communities that DeKalb's comparing itself to. We haven't reached that level yet because we're still trying to figure out how to meet all of our needs, some of which are due to the fact that when they built this building, there was no consideration of building up reserves either for necessary or unforeseen events. So what we did this year is we did an engineering report and an IT assessment to figure out what our long-term needs are over the next five, ten, fifteen years. Now that we have that information, we're trying to figure out, how do we build up... Well, not how we build up, how do we pay for the things that we know over the next three to five years absolutely have to happen? Starting with some deferred maintenance we're doing right now on the plaster work upstairs, which has been crumbling for three or four years, we came to the city and said, hey, do you guys have some money for us? We were told, hey, no, you gotta figure that out yourselves. We've been trying to do that, but that means we have to be able to do that within the confines of this levy, because the library is almost a hundred percent funded by tax property dollars, whereas the city's taxes are being used mostly to pay for portions of police and fire pension, which is its own mess that I have to deal with at the state level. But where the library is concerned, almost all of our money is coming directly from property taxes, and we need to use it not only to pay for the operations of the building that we're all in right now, but also for our known needs. We have a lot of IT infrastructure that you can't see in this building that is out of date, and not just out of date like, oh, man, see if you can stretch that laptop for another year. Our switches are going to expire over the next year to eighteen months, and when they expire, they're no longer supported. They die completely. So that's like, I think it's a three hundred thousand dollar project, which luckily we get some E-rate funding for that reduce that cost, but they're not... It's not a small amount of money that we're dealing with, and that doesn't include any reserves for unforeseen expenses that we don't know what are happening, we don't see coming down the pike, because even though we've done our assessments, there's always something unexpected happening. So I think it answers your question to say that we've been trying our best to keep the rate flat or to lower it. By the time we actually did our rate, we knew we were lowering it slightly. I think the expectation of the library board is that we'll continue to do that until we get to an appropriate level. You know, we're a very small part of the overall budget. I understand that every part counts, every dollar counts. I'm a taxpayer here, too. You know, I also am gonna pay this bill in April, like the rest of you. But I do think that the library is coming closer to the point where we are at a fair and reasonable tax rate. We're trying to do it, like I said, incrementally so that we can do it without cutting our services and while still taking care of the building, because it was... It's one thing to say, well, you can't fix the plaster work to open the accessible handicap door to make services better for the public. It'll be a different thing if it's something that we absolutely can't put off for any more time. You know, we have to self-fund that, unless you want us coming here and asking you for loans, which I don't think, you know, based on how that went down last time, I think all of us would prefer if the library was able to meet its own needs without having to come to city council for bailouts. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. My concern overall, though, is, again, we have a eleven point one percent aggregate tax rate, and I understand you're a small... And I understand you're a small part. The city's a small part. We're less than 10% of this whole thing. But it's going to take all taxing bodies working together, all agreeing to, this is what we're going to do, and we're just going to take our own little sliver of that. The EAV continues to increase at a substantial rate. If Bill decided to hang up his shingles and not recruit any more businesses to our town, let's say, because I'm giving him a lot of credit for what's happened.
Oh, me, too.
You'd be faced with, well, you levied 300,000, 350,000 last year additional? I can't remember the number.
I don't remember either, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, and this year's another 3, 350, right? Somewhere around there. So, we're talking 6 to 700,000, your budget increased. What I'm saying is, that difference between the tax rate that you have right now, if you could work with us on driving to the 9.5, instead of 600,000 or 700,000, maybe it would have been 575,000.
See, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I need to disagree that we're not trying to work with you to bring our tax rate down. Part of what happened last year is that a large amount of TIF money came back, was about 10% of the overall EAV, I believe, came back on the tax rolls. So, that, I think it's perhaps missing something to say that we haven't been working with you. I mean, I think we've been working in conversation with Bill, with you. You know, we met with Bill a couple of times to talk about the tax rate and the tax levy this year. You know, to be perfectly honest, this is the amount that we had set out, and we talked about, should we have a different amount for this year? Should we try to trim and cut? And we were told, no, we shouldn't try to trim and cut. So, I'm a little surprised to be hearing it in this meeting, that this is coming as a shock to you. I know you weren't there for the entirety of the meeting on Wednesday night, but we have been trying to work to bring the library's rate down to a reasonable amount. And I was excited when Bill said that we might be bringing in a meeting where you'd bring all the taxing bodies together to discuss this with everybody in the same room. But I'm afraid I have to disagree that we're not working with you on that.
So, we told you to trim, to not trim and cut?
I was told that the budget that we passed on Wednesday night was an appropriate budget to pass.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, you guys are on the library board, you guys are working on your strategic goals, looking forward. So, in that, can you carve out a goal to get to that, put that 0.37, and then some goal of additional revenue sources as well, since about 100% of your funding is coming from the levy?
I think there's going to need to be a discussion about whether it's appropriate for a public library to find additional revenue sources. I mean, most of what we try to do here, we try to do for free. Everything is included once you pay your tax bill. We've gone fine-free, our printing is free, our notary services are free, our programs and activities are free. And part of the ethos of the public library is that it's open and accessible to everyone. We have kicked around the idea of doing passport services, but you have to have the passport office approve that. We've talked about doing other things like, you know, vehicle registration tags and stuff like that. But again, that's not a major moneymaker. You know, I don't want to throw any other taxing bodies under the bus, but it's irritating to me when I go pay my tax bill, and then I go try to attend a function somewhere else, and there's a fee attached to it. You know, I feel like I pay my taxes, and what I paid for should include all aspects of that thing I already paid for without having to pay extra. So, I know we talked about that when we discussed whether that would be a possibility. I will bring it to the library board to see what they say, but my inclination is that they are not going to want to add additional revenue sources. I do think there's going to be further discussion about what is an appropriate rate for the library to be at, and what I said I was shooting for, which we didn't quite achieve this year, although we got about halfway there, is a comparable tax rate for other libraries. And when we looked at comparable areas, I looked directly at your financial plan. So, I looked at the libraries that serve the cities that you found to be comparable to DeKalb that you're comparing yourselves against. I went and found out what their tax rates are, and I'm comparing us against it. We're very close to the average, and I think this actually brings us slightly below the average, but I think what we should be shooting for is the median rate of those places, which is slightly lower. So, we are going in that direction, and that would be my guess. But at some point, I'm pretty sure the library board will hold. There isn't, there isn't, there isn't yet, to my mind, a compelling reason to cut us below the median tax rate for all those other libraries. And I know that the goal is for every taxing body to do their part, but that means every taxing body needs to do their part, not just the library. And the city's in a unique position, because you do not use all of your, you know, your property tax doesn't fund the majority of your operations. So, you're able to cut more, I think, in different ways than the library is. We just don't have that flexibility.
So, what is the tax rate that you're shooting for, then?
When I did the calculation this time, it was based on 2020. I'd have to look it up, but like I said, it's 37 cents and some change. I'm not sure exactly, right now, we're at 38.1, you know, 38,103 or something like that.
1.53.
Yeah, I think we're shooting for around 37, 4, 5, 6, I don't know. It's somewhere in that sort of.
When is that?
37 and a half is about it. I'd have to go relook and see what the actual number is.
When do you project that would happen?
I would think next year.
That'd be substantial, because you only went down, what is it, 4 one hundredths of a percent? And to do that, that'd be a whole tenth of a percent.
I mean, I think the other thing that isn't necessarily coming fully into light is that although there has been a lot of money coming in from the new corporations and that in town, it hasn't fully hit the books yet. So, you know, the library board is trying to keep up with that, and, you know, there isn't an expectation to be adding new services, adding new staff, building additions, building branches. I don't think that that's part of the expectation. A lot of it is that when this building was built, there wasn't necessarily a full discussion of what it would cost and take to run it, which I've been saying since I started in 2017, is that the expectations here weren't quite accurate. So, we're trying to properly run the library, properly pay the staff, properly fund our services. You know, all of those things cost money. Our costs have gone up this year, just like everybody else's. You know, we're trying to get fair staff salaries. They're still, they do not achieve the city's goals. I've been hearing from my staff that they wish we could afford to pay for the PPO option, which we don't fund, despite the city having, you know, the same insurance now. We're not able to pay as well or have as good of benefits as the city does using this property tax money. So, we are making cuts, we are making, you know, we'd hoped to get a reserve built over five years, we're now looking at 10 years. So, there are cuts being made, it's just we're trying to make cuts that don't affect services.
Which is exactly, I'm talking about additional revenue streams. And I don't know, I'm not a library professional, I don't know that, but I think trying to flip over those rocks and find those would help.
Yeah, and we are always looking for grants and things like that, that we can use to stretch our services further. But, you know, I think we talked about, nobody wants to fund core services through their donations, you know. Charities don't often want to fund operations, so that makes things difficult in some ways.
Alderman in favor.
So, you brought it up, I didn't.
Sure. I might have dinged myself a hole, go ahead.
No, no. You're right. It preceded you. The building of this building, I was on the city council at the time, I don't feel there was a good working relationship with the library at that time. And I don't feel there was, the expectations, when they were, the computer system that you are saddled with, it was too good to be true, and everybody knew it. And it was so expensive, and it's not working today. So, and the labor, while the labor savings that we were going to get with the automation and things like that were never realized, from my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct. We are, technically, it's all still working right now. We are looking at less expensive alternatives. I mean, I think that some of the things that were purchased, our switch network, things like that, were the best of the best. And I wasn't here, so I couldn't tell them that I thought perhaps we wanted the best of the middle. So, we're looking at good replacements now that will do the job we need them to do, but which will be much more cost-effective. And we, you know, the library board chose to not continue supporting maintenance on this order, which was expensive. It'll be expensive if it actually breaks, but we worked out the amount of maintenance we actually use and what it would cost to pay that as an hourly rate, instead of keeping an annual maintenance contract that's basically the amount of a full-time employee. So, we're giving that up in the hopes of saving some of that money. You know, we keep renegotiating our contracts to try to make them lower, we've worked through most of them now. A lot of them were baked into five-year plans, and some of them were five-year plans with auto renew. So, we're finding now that it's kind of hard to get out of something when you're three years into its second round, where you didn't even realize it was on auto renew at the time, partly because there was never a list left of what all of the contracts had been. So, it's been a real fun couple of years getting surprise bills of 30, 40, 50,000 out of nowhere, because the contract expired that we didn't know was in there.
But, the only, the point I wanted to make is, again, I understand it preceded you, but going forward, obviously, I don't think anybody on the council is saying they don't want to work with the library, so.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
No. And, but when there's opportunities like that, again, do we need the best of the best, or can we get by with it's good, or it's better than good, but we don't necessarily need world-class?
Quality basic.
Yeah.
I say quality basic is what I am encouraging them to find for us, which, you know, so far, we've done pretty well with that. We have managed to cut quite a bit of money by cutting some of those contracts, you know, even little places. You know, we're changing our mat company next year, because the mats are cheaper from a different company, you know. So, we're trying to make those cuts wherever we can, also.
No, I appreciate that. And as you say, I, as we go forward, obviously, I think there'll probably be more council attendance at library meetings and more discussion that we would like to have.
Sure. I mean, it has been very helpful to have, to meet with Bill and sort of go over things. You know, he and Carrie have been really helpful in helping me figure out what the expectations are and what they're, you know, what they're anticipating from all of the assessors and things like that. I do call the assessors, too, but it's, you know, filtered through, Bill's expertise really does help a lot. So, yeah, any other questions on that one?
Counsel? City manager?
Two things. Well, what I told the board was, when we were talking very specifically about the levy of the 2,975,95, and I had suggested that the EAV might be climbing even further, and the board was content that their rate was as Emily was reporting about where it ought to be at this point. It's come down by about a percent and could come down lower next year. The board concluded that that was a solid place to be. So, the one point I wanted to make, aside from the detail here, and this is a good news for the community, and we have a couple members of the third estate here tonight. I think this is important to note, that since 2018, our EAV roughly has gone up 200 million. So, in 2018, it was 585 million. And since the 1850s, when the city was incorporated, we've had a loss of value on a number of occasions, terrifically in the 1870s and 80s, then in the 1930s, and a few pretty severe recessions in the meantime. But it's been rebuilt, and we just added in three years, 200 million. It's a transformative opportunity for all of us as stewards of the public trust to look at how our residents should be contributing to our future growth, and what is just right? You know, it's the old, it's a little hot, that's a little cold, that's just right. What is just right? We've had a lot of conversation in this room about that in the last couple of years. And I think we're getting closer, but we're going to have to work together to get there. This is an opportunity for savings for people who have been paying what they can't really afford for a number of years.
And just to put a capstone on it, I guess, for me, that whole 9.5%, we get to 9.5%, that's going to make an impact on commercial development in this area. It's going to make an impact on residential development in this area. Every single house that we build, every single building that we build increases the property taxes, the EAV that comes into our community. But when we have 11.5, we're now 11.1%, we're forced to do even more incentives, we're forced to have conversations, and we've had some recent ones with some large companies that our rate is a concern for them going forward. So, the goal of trying to get to that 9.5, and I understand what you're saying, Emily, but for the city of DeKalb, which your levy impacts us, right, our overall levy, we're really trying to show leadership with all the taxing bodies. Let's get to the 9.5. Let's all work together, let's drive to that. And when I say we get to the 9.5, we're still going to increase our budgets. You're still going to have more dollars that are going to come in to the library. The school district's going to have more dollars that are going to come in. We're not asking people to cut staff, cut expenses, cut those things, because the EAV has increased so much, we have additional dollars in our coffers to spend and expand services, benefits, do infrastructure improvements, all those things. But if we don't work together as all taxing bodies together, we're going to be in the issue that we've always been in, and we could easily go back four years ago, where we have zero, zero increased EAV. No one's building here. Right now, how many housing starts have we had, Bill? I know I'm calling you out, but.
Single family?
Yeah.
Nine?
Nine. 40,000 people, nine. I'd love to see the stat for the entire county.
Well, you don't have to go very far from here to get up to 40.
Yes. So, you're saying, drive across the street essentially to Sycamore, and we could have 40 housing starts. That 11.1% property tax is one of the reasons why we have that particular issue. So, council has been doing a great job, but we need to continue doing that great job. We need to continue speaking from our chambers here about the importance of getting to 9.5, so all the other taxing bodies can come together and we can drive to that. Then we can see the increased housing starts, more development, which in the end, just means more money for every single solitary taxing body in our community. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's see, I've got to close this public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:45, and then we'll move on to Agenda Item J, considerations, which we have none. And then we'll move on to Agenda Item K, number one, Resolution 2022-107, approving a collective bargaining agreement with the DeKalb Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 115, Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, for the period from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. Ken, I have a motion to bring this to the floor.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman in favor. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A three-year contract that covers our Lodge 115 is coming to an end at the end of this year. The city was approached, really was just a timing issue where both parties were interested in looking forward to see what we could do in a fairly tumultuous time again. Going like this the last couple of years in terms of some national trends, and at the time that we first sat down to talk in late July, early August, the overall inflation had, year on year, they had just announced that it increased by 8.2%. And that's a high number when you're thinking about what will happen if you want to do a long-term agreement. So, what's before you tonight is a one-year agreement, although we covered some other ground in just wages and the possibility of wage increase. And obviously, we, both parties did their homework and looked around the state at what other corporate bodies were settling on in terms of rate increases and so forth, and what some of the arbitration rulings had been around the state. And that was all background to our initial discussions. We were also, we were also interested, both party, both sides of the table, in addressing an issue which is really a window to the hard work and dedication of our police department. And I want to thank Chief Bird for being the leader of that department and likewise contributing to that general approach to service. Because we've been down in terms of staffing, we've had a lot of officers working a lot of hours and filling holes and extending to meet challenges in addition to the national economic trends, just challenges here at home in terms of the spike in violence that we were experiencing right in the middle of as we were sitting down to talk. So, this contract covers a few other things. Let's start with the economic term. It's a one-year term, as I mentioned, cost of living adjustment of 2.5% to work equity adjustments also in some of the steps to make us comparable to other communities and those, that list of seven or eight that we have in our, in our breadbasket every year as we look at what is comparable. The, also, an ingredient that has arisen here recently is we're trying to hire officers, and this is a challenging time, as the number of people interested in the profession has not been as high as we'd like. That's nationwide, it's not a local phenomenon. So, we've been hiring some lateral hires, which is to say, people have already become certified officers, they've been working someplace else. So, there was an issue, though. Our contract was silent on what happens if you're a six-year officer someplace else, you know, come in, do you start at step one, the lowest step, or where do you start? So, we had some back and forth on that. So we had some back and forth on that. I think it was, it was constructive and there, there is, uh, a new standard, at least for now, which was collectively bargained. Lateral hires who have four or more years, uh, can't be appointed higher than the fourth step. Uh, lateral hires with less than four years can't be hired beyond the second step. And, uh, both parties were willing to agree to that. Also banked overtime has increased, uh, a, a lot. And, and in that way, uh, we're talking about comp time. So, uh, officers were needed. Couldn't just say, I did my 40, see you next week. No, I'll, I'll come in, I'll work Friday, I'll work Saturday. And if they're working four-ten, so they're, they're going to have three days that instead of being with their families or doing something else, they're, they're coming in. So they can't take their time off. We've been banking those hours. So there's a question about at the end of the year, can they carry some of those hours, more hours forward? And, and the answer to that was yes, as a result of this negotiation. Sick leave payout, same thing. Uh, we, we want to encourage people to, if they are sick, to stay home. We just went through the COVID pandemic. Uh, whether it's gone or not, uh, people still get sick. And we want to encourage that. On the other hand, when, when people are just kind of pushing and trying to get in here and are working, they're also accumulating more sick leave. And so there was, and they're building up banks which are over and above what you can carry forward from year to year. We talked a little bit about that as well. Also, there is, uh, so we're trying to do a couple of things. We're trying to, uh, encourage people to keep, uh, keep pushing a little bit to fill some holes until we can, uh, hire up. But, uh, we also wanted to incentivize some wellness opportunities. And we have for a while, uh, had in our contracts, all, all three of our labor contracts, the ability to get, uh, a, a small stipend if you're, if you're going to commit to an annual physical exam, if you're going to join a health club, uh, if, if you're going to, uh, in the case of the, of the police department, uh, if you're going to, uh, take part in a power test which shows, uh, your, your fitness. And so there's a little bit of a stipend there. We didn't increase that. We just kept that in the contract. What we did do is set up a Section 115 trust so that members are, uh, able to convert, uh, some of the sick hours that are, they are disproportionately accruing, uh, into dollars and they can be deposited into a health account while, while they're working. And that helps defray costs, particularly for younger, or they have young families, of, uh, health costs that, that co-pay, uh, experience. And when, when they get to retirement, whatever they have in there, then they can take that with. It may not last for a long time, but it's, it's a bank and they, and they can at least plan then on what they're going to do with money that they've earned, frankly. So that's in there. Uh, that, those are the, uh, the principal ingredients in, in the proposed, uh, one-year labor contract. The FOP Lodge, uh, has a, a very participatory way of voting. And it does so over a couple of weeks. People, when they're in, uh, get to vote and come into the police station and vote. Uh, so at this point, all the voting is over. Uh, Lodge 115 has, uh, ratified it and, uh, we, we feel this is a fair contract. We'll be back again at the table, this time, uh, in 2023. And all of us want to look at a longer-term contract, but it seemed like the right, just the right balance to hit. There are a lot, other things we could have talked about, but we kept it down to a core of six things. And that's where we are. We recommend, I recommend, uh, on behalf of the administration and also the Lodge, your approval.
Counsel? Yes, Alderman Smith?
Bill, we're bringing back corporals? Pardon? Are we bringing back corporals?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, we're not, uh, there's no plan to. It's, it's there. It's something. But it's not, hasn't been active for many years.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Faber?
No, I would just, I would also just say, you're again, great work, um, for yourself and for the staff and, you know, all the police members, um, just the job they do. Very thankful for having them in our community. And recognizing that right now we're in a kind of a season of, uh, you know, high inflation and it's just going to be temporary. So I think this is fantastic to be able to do a one-year agreement. I'm glad that it's worked out well. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Roll call?
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance, or, sorry.
Thank you.
Resolution 2022-107, uh, is approved. All right, moving on to number two, uh, resolution 2022-108, authorizing a communication site lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for space on the East Water Tower located at 1119 Oak Street, including land for equipment, rights of way for ingress, egress, and the installation and maintenance of utility wires, poles, cables, and conduits. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved?
Second?
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to correct one thing. I said under, uh, item number one, it should read, uh, initial term is for five years at a monthly rental of $2,833 to be paid in equal monthly installments. I don't know what happened there. I was looking at it over the weekend and, uh, I guess thinking about millions and I just-
I thought that was pretty good rent when I read that, yeah.
And, and I want to thank Brian, Brian Faber. We have, from time to time, as you know, uh, worked with, uh, telecom companies that have wanted, have liked the height of our water towers and have wanted to locate antenna. That makes sense from a business standpoint. Uh, we'd like to, um, gain a little bit from that too. And, uh, this is competitive with, uh, where we've been with our other contracts. I want to make one point to you. I added, we added something today, uh, thanks to Alderman Perkins for, uh, pointing this out. There, the, there was some general language, not real specific, to what would happen if, say, the city decided to paint the tank again and we had to take down the antenna. Who pays for that? Do we pay for that? Do they pay for that? Is it a shared thing? And, uh, from what I could tell, it could have been read either way, but I was leaning, of course, some bias. I was thinking that we wouldn't have to, uh, hold the, the, the full share, but, uh, that, that certainly would have been, uh, disputable. So what's in red is the best that we could, uh, negotiate, but I think it is, is a benefit actually to us in the short term. If we made a habit of, of asking the, these companies to remove their antenna on an annual basis, I, I don't think we could possibly hope that, uh, they would not want, that, not push back. But, uh, what, what we've said here basically is if, if we take it down and they're happy with having something on the ground, great. And, and if, if not, then we get to do this once in a five-year period, basically. And after that, we'd be responsible for relocation costs. So if they give us one bite out of the apple, and, uh, I think that's pretty fair. This isn't something we usually do. And the, and the possibilities of what would cause that are pretty slim. Something we want to do, or I suppose a catastrophic, you know, plane hits a tower or something like that, we have to deal with that. But then insurance would, would play, come to play.
Counsel?
So I, I, I had a question before, but when I saw $33,000 a month, I thought, well, it doesn't matter. So now that it's not-
Now it does.
You know, I, I've driven through communities where you, you see a water tower and it's loaded with cell antennas. Um, and in many ways, it's just a complete eyesore. So I know like on the high-rise on Taylor Street, they've used some materials to make it seem like they're not there, even though you, you can still obviously see it. I'm, I'm just kind of curious what this might look like for $3,300 a month if everyone driving around sees this thing and sees a bulky set of antennas up on top. I don't know. Is it worth it?
So I'm going to ask Brian, who looks up at this tower every day, I'm sure, counts the rust marks on it.
Well, I used to live at 1124 Market. It's literally in my backyard. So for 10 years, I stared at it too, and it looked beautiful without antennae.
Yeah, no, I feel a little bit the same way. You know, we don't want it to be an eyesore. East Tower is located right next to our shop, which is on Market Street. There is a railing that goes around that tower now. There are existing Verizon and T-Mobile antennas on that tower. I don't think they look like an eyesore. In fact, I'm not sure if anyone even notices that those, uh, antennas are on that tower. Um, they're mounted on the railing itself, so they do tend to blend in. We do have the, uh, um, cellular carrier, paint everything the same color as our tower and throwing the wires, the cables, um, the cables from the equipment, uh, the small equipment building, not even a building, platform that, um, is next to the tower. Those wires will go underground, so you won't have, you know, those exposed. But overall, I think, um, generally speaking, they, they don't tend to be an eyesore. We have antennas also on the North Tower, uh, where the, um, high school logo is at. I don't know if anyone really notices those antennas on that tower either, but we have Verizon and T-Mobile on that tower as well. So, um, not necessarily ideal, but the antennas need to go somewhere in our community and, and for the most part, I think the towers tend to work out fairly well.
Counsel?
Thank you.
So I've heard that railing is, you know, younger people love climbing that and it's a great view, uh, at least back in the day, so I heard. Um, great water tower. All right. Uh, no other questions or comments. Uh, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2022-108 passes. Moving on to number three, resolution 2022-109, authorizing the purchase of Genesis E-Force battery-operated extrication equipment from Equipment Management Company in an amount not to exceed $36,607 using funds from the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation, GEMT Fund, Fund 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faber. Uh, city manager?
As mentioned in the background, this, uh, complement of tools would be assigned to the second replacement engine that's to come in January. But, uh, as I said in the background, and Chief Thomas educated me on, these are definitely more powerful, more efficient to use as battery-powered and, uh, they require actually less storage space on the, on the apparatus. And, uh, the, the cost at $36,607 can be, uh, fully covered by our GEMT fund. And, uh, we recommend this to you.
Counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2022-109 passes. Moving on to agenda item L, ordinance's second reading, we have none. Then agenda item M, ordinance's first reading, number one. Ordinance 2022-061, authorizing the 2022 levy and 2023 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes and special service areas of the city of DeKalb for tax year 2022. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The city levy that is proposed, uh, and, and identified in this ordinance is $7,119,130. That's the, the levy that was discussed at some length with the Finance Advisory Committee back in mid-October and recommended by them to you. We have not changed that, even though we know our EAV has gone up, um, shooting a little bit lower and trying to be cautious just in the event that the final EAV is not what we think it's going to be. So as we've already talked, uh, it looks like our rate will decrease by about 7.44% from last year's rate. The library's rate would drop about a little over a percent. And, um, also part of this ordinance, uh, are the, uh, special service areas. We, we levy for those and then, um, those, uh, amounts are paid by, uh, the private property owners to us and we use them for a variety of purposes. Some of them are in, uh, housing developments where there's some common area that, uh, is taken care of by these. We also have the Market Square and Hunter Ridge Brook. This would be the last year for Hunter Ridge Brook. We carried that forward because that processes, the process of rejuvenation and renovation is still going on and they can use these monies outside, as we discussed when we first did the agreement, uh, with, uh, Windy City back at the beginning of the year. So, uh, unless you have some questions, uh, we recommend that levy and, and the SSA amounts that are in this ordinance. This is on first reading only. We bring this back at the next regular meeting for action.
Counsel? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call?
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2022-061 passes on first reading. Moving to number two, ordinance 2022-062, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb for the tax year 2022 bonds. Can I have a motion to approve this on first reading?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faber. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So you see in this, uh, particular ordinance, our, our debt portrayed to you and, and also summarized in, in some, uh, small narratives. And, uh, what we propose, uh, to do is to go ahead and levy and then abate, uh, the, the debt service on these bonds, various, various debt instruments. And, uh, we'll be doing that not out of our property tax, but out of, uh, general revenues as we have in recent years. Also includes the library bond.
Counsel? Questions? Comments? Yes, Solomon Smith?
Bill, when is the, uh, library bond due or called?
That was 2013. That was, uh, the bond. We, we participated. I wasn't here.
Yeah, I know.
But, uh, the council participated in, uh, the funding for the expansion.
But I mean, when's the call date on it? I mean, I saw it on there, but when is it?
Oh, 23.
33? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
We have a long time.
We have a long time. All right. Uh, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2022-062 passes on first reading. Moving on to number three, ordinance 2022-063, amending Chapter 51 traffic schedule Q speed restrictions to establish speed control along and adjacent to Peace, Peace Road. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Engineer Zach Gil brings this forward to our attention. Uh, there are some adjustments to smooth the passage of traffic on one of our major arterials, uh, Peace Road, uh, from the north side of 38 South. The two in particular is the reduction from 55 miles an hour, which if you're running from Sycamore down to Cal, when you get in the vicinity of Pleasant, goes to 45. And it would take 45 down there to the I-88 interchange. And then as you get south of there, you get to 35 when you get down on the Gerler. And now the more built-up area with all of the, the new industrial investment going on there. So this makes that consistent from the interchange on down. There's a transition. So, um, makes a lot of sense and we recommend it to you.
Counsel?
So I, just out of curiosity, I, I mean, I just drove, rode a piece a bunch. You know, with all the semi-traffic on it, we're talking, I'm talking between 38 and 88. Hitting 55 is almost impossible.
Yeah, we're taking it down to, yeah, to 45.
I, I know, but I'm saying hitting 55 is almost possible in general. When there is that final opportunity that there's no semi in front of you and you can go, I, I appreciate being able to go 55 miles an hour because it's wide open street.
Chief?
So- Well, no, it's posted 55, where I'm talking about.
Yeah, we got to come down.
Yeah, it's po, I know. And I'm saying, in many ways, for me, I'm not necessarily for, uh, going from 55 to 45.
So this is a transition, though, in anticipation of that-
Come on up, Zach. You know we're, we're going to ask.
Major, major street project that-
Yep.
Has been long awaited and what next year will be kicking-
Yep.
Uh, off in, in a substantial way. So, uh, and that'll be going to four lanes. And that would be, then treacherous, if you've got four lanes of trucks going 55 there, that would, that would be too much. And as you get closer to the, as you get past the interchange southbound, then you want to step that back because you only have a short strip before you get to the 35. It doesn't make sense to keep that 40, or, yeah, 45 to go down to 35.
He touched the most important part. You want to go 55 because you've been stuck behind all sort of weird nonsense in this one lane. this one lane of road, when now it's four lanes going forty-five, maybe fifty, you know, on the four lanes. It's gonna feel a lot smoother than, I wanna go fifty-five, I wanna duck out and try to get out of this slog, so I think it will be an overall better experience, and the intersection is designed, things like the decelerational lanes, now they're adding a right turn lane. You know, think about someone going fifty-five, wanting to turn right on a Fairview, you know, doing that, that's a real slam on the brakes and affects everyone behind you, and we bring that speed limit down and widen out, I think it's gonna be a much better free-flow experience for everyone and safer one.
Yes, Solomon.
Just a, just a thought, too, if you, if you think about it, you drive it, there are multiple stoplights along that path, so to even get to fifty-five, you've really gotta get on it.
Right now, you could be, yeah. You may.
Thanks for, thanks for pointing that out, you know, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you get to fifty-five, and then you hit a red light at MACOM, you know, five hundred feet later, what good it'd do you to be going fifty-five, you're in a stop condition again.
So, also, and, uh, Zach pointed out in his background, and I, I just didn't put it in here, but, uh, we're all aware that at the intersection of Peace and thirty-eight, we've had some of the worst traffic accidents in our.
There, I understand. The reductions.
And, uh, oftentimes, if you are southbound from, say, Sycamore area or further north, and you're, you're, you're getting to Pleasant, instead of throttling down, you're, you're gonna, you blow through that light, it's a green light, and you go and you're, you're launched over the top of the railroad bridge, and, and, and you see green at thirty-eight, oftentimes people just plow right through there and they don't stop, and they're going fifty-five or sixty through that, it's just too fast. And then, as Alderman Perkins was saying, you get, get to MACOM and, and you gotta put on the brakes, especially if a truck is pulling out there and they're, they're slowly making their turn.
You have a lot of practical experience being launched, I mean, yeah.
I drive it cheap.
All right, any other questions or comments, counsel? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six three passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll.
Oh, yes, Alderwoman.
I'll just say one thing, um, I think, no matter how our personal driving is, I think having the city determine what we consider to be the safest speed limits, and those are what's posted, it gives people, when it's dark and you don't know what's coming, when it's poor weather conditions, I think people will drive what they're gonna drive no matter what's posted, but for us to have picked the appropriate speed, I think is very important.
Agreed. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two two dash zero six three. All right, moving on to number four, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six four, amending Chapter fifty-one traffic Schedule B through streets, stop intersections and yield intersections to establish a three-way stop condition for Fairview Drive as it's intersected by Monticello Drive and creating yield conditions for streets terminating at Dodge Avenue. Yeah, that's a lot there. Uh, can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins, city manager.
That title should have a period after Monticello Drive, um, that was a fragment from an earlier ordinance that had combined both, and I pulled them out so that you could take them separately and understand that a little bit better, I think.
Yeah, 'cause number five in the agenda is the last, okay. That sort of confused me.
No big deal.
No worries.
So, um, it's a three-way stop, uh, what we're proposing there, and it makes a lot of sense. Uh, I think, uh, Zach, uh, has found a creative way to, and I hope we'll, we'll find, uh, successfully, uh, calm traffic going through that area, and, uh, and it's gonna be enforceable with those stops, and, uh, we'll, we'll see, but I, uh, this is a necessary part of that improvement that was done on the highway.
Counsel? Questions, comments? Yes, Solomon Perkins.
Thanks for the work your guys have put in on that, looks, looks great, things have come along pretty well, almost, almost seamlessly, excited to see it all come together.
Yeah, it's a great project. Any other comments or questions? So recording Secretary Scott, before I ask roll, can you kick it off with Alderman Perkins?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six four passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two two dash zero six four. All right, number five, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six five, amending Chapter fifty-one traffic Schedule B through streets, stop intersections and yield intersections to establish yield conditions for streets terminating at Dodge Avenue. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, if you've read Zach's background, he dryly suggests that, uh, there shouldn't be a need for these yield signs because if people would just read the rules of the road, they would notice it's a de facto yield when you have a situation like this, but, as we all know, nobody reads rules of the road after they get out of their driver training. So, uh, here we are, uh, we have noticed, uh, some misses and, uh, and not misses, uh, some accidents at Dodge, which is pretty quiet, but we've got three small, small streets that just come into that, and they don't come in exactly perpendicular, so people are just kind of looking one way, not both ways, and they get some fender benders, so this will make sense, the neighbors have asked for this, uh, and we feel it's, uh, the right thing to do, so.
Counsel? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six five passes on first reading, take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two two dash zero six five. That is really cool, 'cause I drove around that neighborhood recently, um, what a cool, what a cool quaint DeKalb neighborhood, too. It's been years since I went through it, so it was really cool. Um, but you noticed that, the lack of, of signage and stuff like that, so I think this is a great addition to the safety of the residents in that neighborhood. All right, agenda item six, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six six, approving a special use permit to allow the re-subdivision of a TFR two-family residential zone lot into two single-family attached lots in accordance with Article five point zero three point zero six of the Unified Development Ordinance and approval of the final plat of Mansky subdivision located two zero two, oh yeah, two zero two and two zero four Chamberlain Drive, Chris and Laura Mansky. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. There was a flurry of this, uh, type of activity back, uh, in, before the housing collapse here in Sycamore and other places in Illinois, um, properties that were designed as duplexes, um, got two families, uh, they weren't related, they didn't necessarily want to, uh, talk to each other about their, their buying and selling timing and so forth, and so this enables them to sell their individual units, to be simple. But according to our rules, you, you do need to have a public hearing, a special use permit that goes with this and a final plat, and so the petitioner has, uh, with the help of Mark Doherty, who's in the audience, been sitting patiently tonight, uh, have complied with all of our, uh, requirements, have been to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, they liked it and recommended by a vote of six to zero. There was one commissioner who recused herself, um, uh, but for business reasons, so, uh, comes to you with, with, uh, a strong recommendation to approve.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
So, so similarly, I need, I need to recuse myself from this one, abstain from the vote as well.
You betcha. All right, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six six has been passed on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. Questions or comments? I assume same applies for Alderman Perkins, Alderman, or Alderwoman Morris.
Um, I just think this is really cool. I think this is a very positive opportunity, uh, for more people to take advantage of, and I appreciate you noting the history on it, city manager, because what that does is it emphasizes to us opportunities to, um, help families build wealth in our community, so I think this is great.
We might, this is one of those things, we'll, we'll talk about in quieter time, if there's such a thing, uh, how we can make this even more streamlined.
Right.
Because this is not, uh, this is not reinventing, you know, zoning, so.
Yeah, this looks a little complicated, and it would be great if we could do it a little easier for people.
Yeah, if it didn't have to come before counsel potentially.
Right.
You know, I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
Possible or not.
We'll talk about.
Yeah, that'd be great. Great comments, Alderwoman. All right, uh, we had a motion and a second to waive second reading, correct? That's where we're at? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two two dash zero six six. Awesome. Uh, you don't need to stick around, you're more than welcome to exit stage left if you would like. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number seven, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six seven, approving a special use permit for a retail tobacco store at eleven-eighty West Lincoln Highway, D.I., D.I.N.A. Five Incorporated, DBA Smokers' Choice. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I think, uh, the folks sitting in the front row, uh, and Mr. Yunus, did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
Oh, I did.
Yes.
Good, I didn't want to disrespect. Um, so, uh, this is, uh, uh, obviously, uh, first, special use permit to, uh, have a standalone, uh, retail tobacco store, it would go into a building, uh, that formerly had the Beef Shack Restaurant, uh, they've, uh, met, uh, all of our, uh, essential requirements. Um, at, at some point, I'm, I'm just gonna bring this up tonight, uh, not, we strongly support this, um, and, and they are complying with it because the building is a standalone, uh, restaurant building, but at some point later on, we, we do want to talk to you about whether that's still your, your preference, obviously, for smell and, and other reasons that made sense, uh, at the time that it was promulgated in the UDO, but we'll have some other opportunities to bring back UDO, uh, considerations to you this, to comply with the, the most recent changes in the comp plan, and this is one we'll look at. Just because we keep getting questions, can I put this in, and it's usually an attached, uh, rental space, so, but anyway, back to the matter at hand, uh, we, uh, took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, uh, the, the commission, uh, recommended this to you, uh, and the staff recommends this, uh, their, uh, uh, other than what's in your background here about landscaping, which is going to be done, and, and some other things, uh, striping in this, on the parking lot and so forth, uh, everything complies, so recommend your approval.
Counsel? Uh, Alderman Favor.
Just to, not, not to talk specifically about this one, but to tag on to your comments, um, like, in this case, there is no smoking permitted in the store, so I don't see why the UDO would require, would, why we wouldn't allow that in an attached facility. If it was, I think some of that came about because of the previous smoke shops we had were.
Smoking inside.
Hookah Bar, yeah, had, they permitted smoking within the facility, so, correct, if there's no smoking allowed in the facility, I don't think there's a, a reason to have that as part of the UDO, but maybe that's a distinction between.
We'll, we'll bring that back, but that's a point in mind.
But thank you very much for bringing another business to DeKalb. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six seven passes on first reading. I take a motion to waive second reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two two dash zero six seven.
Congratulations.
Once again, yes, thank you. Have a wonderful night now. All right, moving on to agenda item N, reports and communications. Uh, who'd like to pick us off?
I can start.
Alderman Verbic.
Many thanks to the Glidden Homestead and Historical Society for being gracious hosts of our Ward Six meeting last week. It was a lively discussion.
Absolutely. Uh, Alderman Favor.
Say no report.
Alderman McAdams.
No report.
Alderman Smith.
Uh, no report.
Alderman Perkins.
So this week, um, this weekend, Saturday night, my family and I walked downtown for the event that was hosted by the Chamber, the Holiday Open House for the businesses, and the downtown looked great, um, visited with the, the Lakaii owners, place looks fantastic.
Doesn't it? I know.
Yeah, I was, I couldn't believe.
Same.
The transformation.
Yeah, it was great.
And my oldest son, our oldest son had played in shows there, and, so we've been there multiple times, they've done a great job, so optimistic about that, and then closed the evening out to, um, and saw Clu at the Stagecoach, they had a full house, great to see.
Yeah, it's awesome, the pictures, it's like you guys had a lot of fun.
It, it was a fun show.
Yeah.
I didn't figure it out, I don't think they wanted me to figure it out.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Alderwoman Larson.
Um, just that I was, um, honored to be part of the Veterans Day program that they held at, down at the clock again this year, and, um, very moving, and, and I just wish we'd start seeing more younger people there to keep this tradition going through more generations.
Agreed. Alderman Morris.
I had the, um, opportunity to meet with the Lieutenant Governor's Military and Economic Development Commission, um, in person for the first time since I've been serving on that commission down in, oh gosh, I don't know, near Springfield somewhere. Um, so, you know, it was a real pleasure meeting with, being able to be there with the Lieutenant Governor and a number of other, um, you know, military leaders. We toured a base and had the opportunity to sort of see what some of the military and economic development connections were, uh, there, and so I was trying to see how we can, um, harness some of that and, you know, value it and make use of it here in DeKalb. Um, Veterans Day, I did not get to go to the clock tower because I was working, but I did have the opportunity to, um, meet at, uh, Lincoln Elementary with some students there, and that was a really great time.
That's awesome.
Um, me, just a couple quick things, I met, uh, and had the, uh, the honor to greet, uh, must've been a hundred or two hundred Rotarians, uh, that came to our community. Uh, they all met, it was their annual conference, uh, at, uh, the Barcima Alumni and Visitor Center, uh, so that was just really cool, and especially to be surrounded by people that serve, uh, and they do it just, you know, to do it, uh, to serve something larger themselves, and it was just a wonderful group of people, wonderful event. And then the only other thing, uh, went to the Kishawaki College Gala, uh, which is just, it's a fundraiser for Kish College, but it's just a constant reminder of what a gem we have and an important asset we have in our community with Kishawaki Community College, so it was great to be a part of that and see a lot of generous people stroke a lot of checks that night, which I'm sure they're excited about. Um, city manager, you got anything?
No report.
All right. So with that, uh, we have agenda item O, executive session, we have none, and with that would be P, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.